Okay. Yeah. I'm going to order the, um, for, uh, the board of work that's been for August thirteenth, twenty twenty four. And I'll start with, uh, who called to see who's here, whose name and who's starting to pick their problem. I'll take, uh, this is my dear Terrence Bronder, which should be good.
Dr. Max, if you're interested in that.
Hey, I'm just gonna be fine.
Hey, forward, do the thing.
Um, Alex, you said, uh, the opposite of the. Okay, uh, welcome to any guests that we may have. Uh, and the room is a little sparse here. Uh, yeah, most of the approve the agenda.
So.
Second.
The who, who decided to approve the agenda, all here say ayes, ayes. Any of those, it's approved. Okay, so, um, got three discussion items for today, one of them is the board calendar, which I guess we did want to do the last meeting, and so this is another, I guess, another review on it, and there was some changes made to it. And we'll take another run at it, and then, uh, review a document that's been around, um, for quite a while, operating principles, it's basically, um, the agreement, some of the board injuries about how we conduct business, if you will, and then the third item is, um, taking a look at our strategic plan, which, uh, we've kind of committed to, uh, at least reviewing every year to, to update it and keep it fresh, something we've not done so long past, so we'll try to do that this year, and we'll keep it, keep it current, so, um, starting with, uh, the board calendar.
Yeah, so, yeah. So, yeah, I'll go ahead and start, so I just wanted to just welcome everyone to this meeting, and, uh, just so that everyone know that, uh, the board officially has to approve this calendar before September. So this is our other process to review, the board calendar, um, the board has in front of them, uh, the draft document as well as the board priorities, um, and so what we will do is we will go through the calendar and just, I'm gonna give a little bit of history for people who are just coming in and listening, or for the record, board community, um, anyone that goes online, um, so the board asked, uh, mid-year last, especially around springtime, uh, for staff to, we will look at realignment of the board calendar. So the board priorities are up in front, and the highlighted items are, uh, items that are in force, um, and then we also have many items that are actually required through policy or through federal state guidance, and so, but we have some parts that are district, district mandated through policy. Uh, all of the items in yellow on that board priority list are items that we need to, uh, talk about because some of them are, uh, older items that I didn't know they all were quite a while, actually, and so if there is a dispassion that we need to remove some of those items, and I'm gonna refer back to what you said at the last meeting, that there might be some historical context that we don't know why that's there, that we might need to see, but this is the time to discuss. Um, the other thing I want to share is that we, uh, we were asked to realign and reassess board reports and presentations to fit what actually expected from the district, and that what we did, staff then took that detailed information from the board, were listening, taking notes, and we went back and made those adjustments. Uh, we realigned, uh, school implement, uh, planning work sessions with school presentations, we made sure the reports that aligned the strategic plan are gonna be delivered at the same time as those presentations, we looked at additional input from reports that are requested, uh, to add, in addition, we looked at things that we could take off, when you add that, we're new as well. And then we're sitting here looking, uh, with the team I were battling, seeing this fourth priority list, we've noticed there's these, you know, like, all loading through, there might be high to hiding through because it might still be needed to incorporate into the board, so this is the time to sort of knock through those required policy reports and then any adjustments we need to make moving forward, we also took input from, uh, none of the board meetings to add, change some days, do some editing, and additionally, uh, make sure that it was really clear what we're taking out of our report. So, I just wanted to share that is what happened, so, um, if I could have everyone go to the board priorities document first, before looking at the calendar, um, I'm gonna give it to you right there. Yeah, I'm gonna, it's right here, and all updated, right here. Go to Google, go to, you know, go to board, something like that, click it, and then go to the agenda, go to the agenda, click the agenda, and go to, uh, go to there, yeah, and then we have that logo on the page, and all the documents are there.
So, there's also a forum that has additional questions in it.
Yeah, yeah.
And also additional information for like the ASB policy thirty five ten that says that's being submitted to the board annually, that's included in the budget. So that report can be removed off the, 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 some of those.
So, I guess I just wanted to move the comments, so when I first started, there's a lot of stuff here, for example, for this part, and I wasn't quite sure what you were, um, looking for, and so, uh, Debbie and I had a conversation in the back with some, and I don't know what did, did you read all of it, or?
Not all day.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, um, there's a lot of, when I look at it, there's a lot of stuff that kind of requires some history because, you know, so actually my suggestion was, it was probably the best way to get through all this was have it by the subcommittee, it was probably just me, because I, and whoever else would be interested, because I have a lot of the district stuff, sit down with Debbie and just go through, work, work through all these things, because I don't think, I don't, I mean, I don't, I don't think we could have this meeting now go through. I mean, there's too much background, and so that's kind of my suggestion for, for dealing with this, and then come back to the board with, you know, some relevant data, I mean, what you're looking for is basically board input on this, come back with some recommendations, and then do it again, so.
I'm doing all that excess. If there's a little hanging through, like, if you just, anyone, we can just strike it today, I'd like to get that off. So that any kind of subcommittee meetings, I'm gonna focus on stuff we think is.
Well, yeah, if it's still hanging through in the, in the subcommittee, we can, you know, check, get rid of.
Uh, well. Okay, so not working, a bandwidth of a three hour meeting there.
Yeah.
We have so much other stuff that we won't get through all, and just run through this quickly and say this is a little hanging through.
Well, we just sort of got a little, a little recent, um, actual sign, we're all in, we're there for a week session.
We just have to keep reminding you, that, by, by routine.
Okay.
But I hear there are other ones, what we have. Heavy stuff on your, a lot of junk that's on the cheap ones.
No, I think you only need to meet the strategic plan, and that should pay maybe very bad in this case.
Yeah, the most, uh, it's, it's actually just the first, normal, just, just like in the first place of the calendar, we took a first dive. Uh, for the strategic plan, it's just a first dive, we're gonna be coming back to you again in October with the full, full best information.
Hold on, my other question, something here, is why did I, um, for the last, um, that, and gave it back? But will we have another meeting, it was a fourteen, before the board, I mean, uh, I'm, I'm set on, but it's, it's.
Yeah.
Especially.
What are you, the minutes?
Well, the other approach to do this is, so I have a thing to say about the board calendars, we could do the board calendar for the, the other two, and then at the end, whatever time it's last, we can, we've built it, our, our, we can do this.
Okay, that one thing we can, we can put that in, yeah, right.
So, yeah.
I mean, that, that portion, yeah.
So the board presentation calendar?
Just saying the board's calendar.
Let's talk about the calendar.
Yeah, whatever comes, just to remind everyone, whatever comes with the board priority discussion will impact the calendar, because if we don't get something, we gotta add it in. I'm just letting you know, it will impact the calendar, because we gotta add it back into the, so just letting you know, and I'll make sure it happens, but just letting you know. Okay, would you prefer we go and do it? No, I think we're fine to go over the calendar first, so that you, uh, because we just, so if I wanted to go through the board calendar, um, draft, and we made these recommendations, uh, just wanted to hear from everybody, if there's any additional input on the dates, and then one thing to discuss from everybody here, and then Dr. Larson, we can talk about this, is maybe the retreats.
So, the, well, the, the one input I have on the, on the board calendar relates to, um, the kind of, um, the budget development process, so what I'm, what I'm trying to do, and, you know, the, the charts, uh, the first one is, because in March, which are the bills, and for me, I like to start gathering input on that, you know, like at the beginning of the year, and what I'm thinking of is, um, a process where, um, we collect, um, like student and community input kind of throughout the year. Uh, so we have now, you know, we have a student advisory committee, okay? Uh, we have, uh, a parent advisory committee, which I'm not sure, it kind of started in this kind of spot, so it's still on our side, so.
It's still on.
Okay, so.
But completely led, just for input from, from what I attended, it is completely led by the parent group, and the way they work it, the parent leaders, is they invite the dis, we don't give the district, them the agenda, they give us the agenda, and they invite us to the meeting, as, as opposed to these, you know, it's a district that, it's a, it's a district technically, maybe that it's very much parent driven, parent led, parent initiated.
Yeah, the, the question is that I think to get, uh, kind of a process where their input gets into, work into the, the budget development, so what I'm thinking is that, um, I mean, so for example, this, the student advisory committee that I attended, you know, they came out with, um, you know, the, um, race, uh, anti-racist policy, and that was a red diamond, which we, we reviewed that and said it, at that meeting, they talked about it, and some other stuff that seemed to be kind of got lost, I mean, I sat, listened to them talk about, you know, cut several of the students that were, um, multi-racial, were talking about, you know, how they were kind of innocent, this gives a primary middle schoolers, uh, you know, wrestling with, you know, their multi-racial identity and how the school system picked up, that's a really powerful thing to have input into the the system, and it, it flows really well with the anti-racist policy, we're talking about thinking actually about the curriculum and all that, so, um, and they also talked about a bullying incident that they saw, one of the, you know, immigrant students had been bullied in the bathroom, and so there's another bull area, I mean, I thought, I think that, that actually, when we went up to Scholker, and we saw the presentation from the added students about how they had interacted with the special ed student, I mean, they're, some of those students are could be a prime target for teasing and bullying and stuff, where they, they managed to, you know, bring those seven students together, it sounded like a really powerful thing to do, so, you know, those, those kinds of things, I, I don't want those to get lost when we're thinking about school equipment plan, and thinking about budgets, you know, I mean, some of those things may require some budget, some of them may not, but I'm trying to figure out how we can tie the, the budget process, the school equipment process, the strategic plan, kind of all together a little more tightly, and so, um, I'm thinking, I'm envisioning a process where throughout the year where we, you know, whatever it is, those are the parent advisory group, the student advisory group, the family nights, you know, all those things that we're able to capture, um, the, and I call it street data, you know, it's kind of treated, if we could have, for example, we could have a Google Drive, where whoever attended is a staff person, or one of the board members, or both, we can capture some of that really good data, and so that is captured throughout the year, and then when we get to March, and we start about the budget, we can just go there and see, okay, here we captured this student information, and that should, you know, feed into the, feed into the budget process, feed into the school equipment plan, so that, that's kind of what I'm trying to, so I'm, I'm thinking, you know, here for the, of, of our calendars, we could have, in September, just have a staff come and say, okay, here's a list of things that we want to, that we're gonna try and collect during the year, so, you know, student advisory, parent advisory, that could be, I mean, we did the, the citizens class, for example, is another opportunity, I know, in the past.
You want, you want an engagement plan?
Just that, yeah, just here are some things that we, that we're gonna do throughout the year, and find, and, and plug into them, and then gather some information, put it someplace, and, you know, that.
And then, by, before March, then present to the board what it is.
Yeah, here we have, here we have, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, and so we have, that can, that thing, because I, my sense is that we tend to lose that stuff as it goes through, and there's some really valuable information, and then it comes out, and hopefully, they're already doing, and so I want to just make sure we're capturing, because the other big thing that we tend to miss is the feedback loop to those, uh, so, for example, a couple years ago, I went to the citizens class, you know, uh, I think a month later, I consciously wrote up, okay, here's what we heard, what I heard you tell us, here's what we're doing, you know, some of the things you're doing, we're not maybe out there hearing, but fed that back to them, because so often, I think, I mean, that's how you kind of develop trust in the system, uh, that, that they heard, that, that, you know, they've been heard, and they had, have some agency, so anyway, that, that's, so the first step in that is just to, and again, here are the things that we're gonna try and do and collect.
So, um, I'm listening though for the record, then, that we will, um, input, um, information, uh, introduction to the board around an engagement plan for, uh, the budget, well, for the budget, the school equipment block process, and the school equipment mess, the school equipment mess should be through the schools, or still, but some of that engagement plan, so, and that will have to be something that we have, uh, Director Verto and CFO, let me coordinate a little bit together as well, and then we can work together.
And I think the part of that is, again, as we, when we, when we go out, um, or talk some truth, I think it would be really good to have, um, the same you got the budget, um, the development process, and there's, there's always, I mean, the best time can get you the two way, and so we're listening to what the folks are telling us about their experiences, but also maybe providing some high level, um, education about the budget, about the which, maybe we already have the documents, you know, the family, uh, uh, up there on the website, about kind of how, but at, at high level, so people kind of understand, the only kind of condition I would make that that happened is that, when I look at it, doesn't really talk about the faculty side of it, it talks about how the state is under company various portions, but not really the faculty side of it, so I would include that, because I want, hopefully, we can engage in some of those students or parents, or whatever, or some of those folks who get engaged in the process by, right, you put their community, and we have the letter out there, you know, they could start, and so, um, got together, kind of, I'm thinking about a two-way, two-way street, uh, so that they get some education about education, because we're really gonna maybe be really, really helpful to our district, if we should get some more revenue coming down, supporting them, kind of engaging, and providing education to all of those parents, and particularly students, which have kind of been, um, I think they're probably less aware of some of that, so, somebody, and you know, we have some stuff on the, on the website, and that's great, but I think that's a message that needs to be repeated multiple times in order to get it to kind of stick, stick, yeah, it is, and so, and I'll get it, so, anyway, that's, that's my kind of vision about how, if we can, that way we can get that, that whole process and tie those, you know, the budget process, I mean, last year, it was kind of chaotic, because we didn't, so, figure out what's going on, and get deadlines to be, and all that, but this year, I think, if we've got, yeah.
Especially, I think, especially in line of the fact that we're not done, right, and we still have additional tests to do.
Yeah, that's other big part of our message is.
Over the next year.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, yeah.
This is the small.
You're important, it's called, uh, pair drive, you want, um.
I come down in September, you know, well.
You want us to set an engagement plan.
Yeah, maybe just a list of, you know, the things that.
That we can, right.
Okay.
Yeah, and most of which we're proud, yeah.
That's the intention of that.
Yeah, most of which, I think, we're probably, gonna, we're gonna do anyway, I just want to make sure that, that, that we collect the information from those, and they get a step back into the process.
I just want to make sure.
The judging, yeah.
But just now, on all of this, um, I love like brainstorming, and people just having any ideas, but some great innovation, come on that, but we are in a budget year, and we're already going down some channels that we have to go down, so might be cool for us to actually articulate as a board, what we'd like advice on, you know, whether, uh, rather than just waiting for our chief, uh, chief, uh, parents meeting, where they drive the questions, maybe upfront, we could actually have eight to ten areas that we're focusing on, or concerned about, and want their thoughts on, uh, rather than just say open, yeah, free form, write anything you want, you know, for me, we're at a place where we need advice in certain areas, and it's hard to respond to people with things like that, but it's where we're focused now, and I might do for us to ask them, hey, if you're looking, we are considering any ideas, sometimes they'll have a lot of ideas, and sometimes we don't have a lot on the board, right?
Thank you, uh, President Dr. Or Alex, do you have anything to add? Just make sure to get your voice here.
Um, no, I have nothing, so what the point, I guess, we go out, so they were saying, like, I know some people that are nice, you were saying, well, you're like, uh, a lot of this stuff was saying, they were saying, they thought that those were gonna stay in the notes of the meeting, and not really going, so I feel that the meeting panel definitely helps, so they, we were the super instance to really advise the guy.
Okay.
Yeah, and I hope to hear from the, you know, I think about that bullying issue, and that's what I'm, 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 you know, here's about some, some ideas that they have for, I mean, you know, I think about that avenue, especially, I mean, you have a similar thing, you know, something to welcome to the new residents, because they're kind of the most vulnerable when they come into the environment, so, anyway, whatever idea, you know, kind of that suits that, and then, and then we could figure out, there's a lot of those things we require, sometimes we require some staff that organizes, which could have a little implications, or maybe not, but anyway, it's, we're aware of that, and so that can, can potentially, but it, I don't know that Adam, he cost the district any money, and it gets just the staff people decided this was a good idea, and so it's true, so, which is great, and so, anyway, but, you know, the other part of it is kind of elevating those things that are really great and are working, to make sure everybody sees, you know, that this is going on, and we want to encourage that kind of activity, so, but, yeah, of course, I think sometimes, I mean, it's a vote, it's a gamble, I mean, I ask some, or I ask them to go to the same, because I kind of like that, is kind of just whatever's on the top of my mind, and then it leaves us to try and figure out how that, how it works, but it's, you do vote, yeah.
Yeah, I think that we can, yeah, but we could use the house.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, you know, um, we can talk about what the lunch is, and what the flavors are, and all that kind of stuff, is that really a little focus, right?
What do we have, what do they control, yeah, that is that.
And the other, the other thing I was thinking is, what happened, like, previously, I was, you know, we talked about, we talked about how to get student involvement, didn't that, the elementary level, so the last CFO actually went out to the elementary schools and talked, and the, the questions were very simple, you know, kind of, why do you like what's going in, and proven, and, you know, they came up with some things, other casting videos, so as soon as they wanted to be excited, so, actually, that's kind of, I think it's happening within the redoing, and, but, and the important thing about that is that, you know, that the students get feedback that they got this suit to, because then it gets in their minds, and how you can see, you know, I mean, what is exciting is most important, I think, that it's, I don't know, but but it's important to me is that they understand now that they have a voice, and they can be heard, so as they mature, then they'll talk about, you know, maybe other things, so.
Thank you, if you have anything to add, or if you have to work. Okay, all right, um, so, besides, is there any additional input from anybody in terms of the calendar? And I also want to make sure we get input on retreats, so retreats for Saturday, if we're not here retreats, or those two retreats, when are the best times, I mean, at work conflicts, uh, just let's go to the calendar first, and then we treat information.
And so, that's important, especially the quarterly Saturdays, want to make sure that works like everybody.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm pretty skeptical on retreats, so, I don't know.
More respective.
Yeah, uh, but, if you as we said things in advance, I can go early enough, I'm like, uh, I got a couple of little silence, I'm, I'm challenging the football team, so I don't know what's happening.
Yeah, yeah.
So, the first retreat date is in January, usually a two day month.
After the break.
Yeah, after the break.
Just not do it for the circle.
You be yours.
Yeah, I can do it.
Well, you have to learn the names.
Yeah.
I think I have a few.
Yeah. Okay, okay, so that's good to know, any other, any other risks?
This makes sense to the staff, yes?
Yes, yeah, this is by the staff and I, we went, we went, we sent our team, we first had T and L, T and L morning look at it, to help us with the alignment thinking, then we brought it to our team, the different members have been one-on-one with our D and A, with our CFO, everybody, just reading out data, and then we brought it to our assessment coordinator, because they have the assessment calendar and the advisory group, and then we made sure that the assessments lined up, so that was done, and then we went back and talked to principal, because we're changing how we're gonna be reporting, and how that's gonna look, and they were in agreement as well, so we went through this, a pretty strong vetting process internally, to make sure, when you make that, the changes, you just gotta make sure you're not missing something, and we still made that something, but I think we're, we're pretty close, like, we, I think we talked to maybe twenty people at least over various times, especially the last three or four months, so we wanted to make sure, and that's why we brought it to the board again, get your feedback, they go back, make the tweaks, go back and spark, because we want this to be, A, we don't want to frustrate, uh, any board community members, we don't want to have reports put in front of you that actually, for example, like last year's report or something, because the data wasn't in, it just wasn't timed, because our assessment calendar, or things like that, so the goal was to make sure that we want to make sure that maybe you are looking at a report, but it's actually a fresh, updated report aligned to our reporting period, and our reporting calendar, and our settlement calendar, and that we just be aligned in all of those, that work, so, anyway, that's why all of the movement happened, that we feel, I actually feel like, for example, the work session, for example, that starts with the strategic plan, and then ends with the school presentation, with the reports all there aligned to the strategic plan, makes better sense. So, we're gonna give it a go, but it does, you have it all connected, you can see the level, district, the reports from the district, and then you can see, okay, and then how does it apply in the school.
Yeah.
I, I just have two, well, five questions, I'm okay with that answer, you're stating, um, they don't know all my questions, so these eleven point six dates complete it all, they have our, our board conferences?
No.
Yeah, and is there anything on here that you worked out, like, here we go, we got it on here, not mandated, but it's something that the board has to do that you wish we could drop back on the board priorities?
That one, the board is starting, we're never gonna talk about, those are the high fat, we've had to do that with the highlighters, and, and so they're on here, so. Yeah, we're gonna have that conversation again, yeah, that's all. Yeah, so, if there are additional feedback that I moved, that we moved on yet, and we'll go on to the next slide, is that everything?
I just had one, uh, that I'm curious about, um, do we have the capability to, uh, measure, like, hits on our website, I'm curious about how many people are looking at the budget, that family does it back, and, and.
Well, this is a work session, we have access to be able to look on our website and see how many hits we get.
Um, I've been working with the folks that, we have our website, the final site, instead of SEO, so that will easily, we didn't want to provide.
Okay, yeah, I'm just trying to figure this out, to, um, and make people aware, you know, is it, are people looking at this?
Absolutely.
Actually, I think we're back that, like, Instagram, or whatever, things, account, people are looking at everything, and.
Yeah.
Right, but they're, yeah, it's getting more sophisticated.
Yeah, it would.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, you guys, we gave it to the board before this is approved, or the Saturday dates confirmation, and our recommendations for the January retreat, or we move to February, or, or, there's all these things, so, we just want to make sure that when people look at this, everybody's straight, this is what we're doing. No confusion, the best.
So, as long as it was calculated, so.
Yeah.
I will say, you know, the board today is, I'm, sure.
Go ahead.
And be clear, for, for, okay.
Okay, great, okay.
For, uh.
Yeah, all right, and we're moving, like, I'm leaving, you can.
Yeah.
This is, we're not moving, nothing, we can just, we're keeping our size, okay, all right, next, I got a minute, uh, I'm gonna take this one down, presentation down, we have the board writers for later conversation. Uh, the next item for conversation, and I'm gonna let you kind of help lead with the operating principles. But there's an operating principle document that was adopted, I believe in twenty twenty-two, yeah, May twenty-four, twenty twenty-two. And I think it, it's a document for the board and how the board, their operating agreements, how they're gonna work together at the board, moving forward. And what I ask is everyone read it. And then if there's any, uh, well, we're thinking five, kind of eight minutes to review it and read it.
I'm not.
I can give you nine.
Eight.
I'll give you eight, then you can tell me, oh, should I add one? I'm trying to be like, I'm trying to be timely for, for CFO slamming.
Eight minutes.
Can you tell us the elevator?
Too bad.
I was like, well, I'm giving eight minutes, cause I've done, I've done the filler, I've given people reading material and then I'm like, okay, how many pages is it? Three minutes, eight minutes, three minutes, put it out, eight minutes, okay, I mean, eight minutes. If it was three minutes, fully get it, sorry. So eight minutes, three minutes, I'm gonna give you more time, but I love you now. And then make your notes about things that you think are great, uh, things that you want to edit. Uh, either content feedback, additional items you want to consider, or edits again, if you think should be removed. But again, this is the one that, uh, that obviously made in twenty twenty-two. So I'm gonna not speak right now, and if you did for eight minutes, they don't have any of that, all right?
Why don't you sign it on there?
Everyone done?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay. So, um, any thoughts from the board related to, we're gonna, uh, to the papers too, that's, any thoughts or suggestions from the board? Maybe any edits or content feedback on that operating?
I agree. One, uh, being consistent, um, when we have a, we don't have a super attendant for a board. So like the first step starts out with that and the board, and then to lower case P. Uh, maybe there's context and ground reasons that I don't understand, but. Just sorry about that. The second one, we talked about the four agreements of courageous and conversations, as if everybody here. On this, we're starting to train and I understand what that is. The usual remedies, right, of four agreements are, even if you want to move now, just put it in the document or anything like that. It's up to you to, if anyone accepts, you know, pop, popping.
I think the greatest conversation, please send in with the law requirements too. I think they're listed out there, and I go to the board, changing the law requirements. If you really have.
All this, all this stuff that they are, um, I'm, I'm, last one, we didn't do your bell. Whether Zach will recall us or not, you know, four ways, sort of going four ways out, when I saw this happen, I went. Okay, so going to this, just ask us, it's not me, mom, they're willing to look at some of the documents, if you're gonna admit it, it changes, and it's right there in the back. I mean, different how the board wants to resolve it. Better, right, how I know, including this, that's what you're talking to.
Yeah.
But I might actually have a train with it already. And when I read this, I think I have, but I don't know.
And so, yeah, sorry.
I think that's, you know, after the super, it's so.
Or, or, but I don't, I'm hunting all over here, though, I'm gonna talk and then you see what you're talking about. So, the law, it's really long?
No, 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 it's what we open up the regular board meetings with, oh, community agreements, we're gonna listen, we're gonna be inclusive, we're gonna be.
Yeah.
That is sad.
If it's just not a, well, that Howard one, the asterisk or number one, then that law says, those are.
Or you, they're ready.
Right, okay, and mine can add those, but I think they're changing.
Okay.
How could that, it's true, I get a lot of that, considering some candidates that choose theirs, you know, how long?
So you just want me to add and work the community agreements into this document?
Or, 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 courage, or points of courageous conversation.
Okay.
And I didn't even say that, because you don't have to. But. If you want this document to accomplish what you wanted to do, put it there, because it's going to declare you that, 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 there. Um, and that's on the, the. That, that, that will. Certainly, we've got it, that will. Assist the caution, but, but, I wouldn't say, but, this is. There, can you say? When I read it, it's just a little, yeah, right, and I do, but.
So just make it explicit what it is, and then if it changes. Then it'll, it'll say everyone is in. Okay?
But I hear, like, like, Lawrence said with the after, or parentheses, comparative, they have, like, Alex or, uh.
Okay.
So on the left, hold on, of course, area, they talked about us, it was in the, the world. It moved to good, um, and I may be taking it somewhere, people don't know it, it, there's jump out of me. I'm very concerned about, you know, communication is a two-way process. But I'm very concerned about us not, our people, that we have need to get out, engage. Work with, listen and respond to all of these, to all of these folks as well. Um, we spend a lot of our time, I know this really raises, in these meetings, why we take a comment and don't comment back. Um, I understand now that we have a process that we're supposed to have response to emails. But in other organizations, um, the entire board needs a multiple response is with either a CC or it's forwarded. Response to everyone, so we're all on page, and understand, understand, we were represented by. Um, and, and this may be too high on over there, but there's nothing to say that that happens. And I guess I'm on a totally different subject last time, um, already wrote DNA. What would the public mean with that? Um, this is distributed anywhere that I can see. And all that may be a little less. Doesn't matter anymore. If I think of how we operate, and those two things are, how we, the war on our communications is suggested by us, listening to the comments. And then, I'm changing between the lines, the legal near meeting.
And to that, okay, and then communication, very quick on accountability, to your line, yeah.
Either one, okay, you know.
They can be as simple as add here, two, DNA, like a spell that won't be needed.
Yeah.
Um, when, um, meeting below the letter.
Um, also speaking something that fall under, no communication or accountability section was helping to build any for problems. So like, I feel that they were a little asking from the media, like, who's saying something like? The board may stop holding the highest, yeah, but, and they go upon the, like. Making sure the actions are made in the best interest of students and pretty well upon this, uh, interest of our person.
Yeah, that's what we're giving for any accountability. You know, it's nothing that you.
No.
Hey, did you get all that, or do you want to just say?
Did I say that? Marks a bit, but I don't want to have to.
Yeah.
Yes, next word, yes.
I was gonna say, adding that, I think that's great ambition, I just wonder. Do we get into some merit? With. From my role. As assumed, because, yeah, because you want, like, you have some ideas unless you define it. So I don't, I don't, I don't know what that position will be placed. Do we have to go with that?
There are positive, oh, that is, I have to look, yeah, I think.
Yeah.
No, I'm saying, I'm saying it's whatever it is. Just put that there.
Yeah.
Right, well, if we say, I hold the highest moral ethos, whatever, asset by, like, the church had one, but not everybody's Christian during it. Like, so then. Based on what, or, you're, we're on this, um. Someone called, or, 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 because they saw them out in public, that someone that they would be. Their board. Right?
Well, as we got towards the end, we'll start talking about personal gain and those things.
Yeah.
Um, confidence, right there.
So, you know, that, like, some are, and also. We think of having stuff for public interest and personal gain.
That's it.
So, so there are policies on that, and if you want that referenced in here, I have a reference to the policy with your statement.
That would be.
So, it's definitely a statement.
Statement.
Yeah.
That's already signed off of.
Leaveled down.
Yeah.
I think there are some ethics in the board handbook as well.
I was gonna say, we sign off on that, you know, the board, so. For. For all technical purposes. Where I can be held toward the brand.
Yeah.
Without being silly, despite saying, man, they can satisfy us, I agree, well, we can, of course, satisfy them, yeah, yeah. Cause we wouldn't be lost, right? Hey, this is cool, like, that's morally ethically just.
The most premier.
There, yes, let's see.
And that word has a lot of potential, I don't even know, we need to, so. Powerful thing, um, so, yeah, whatever we all gonna have. Recurred that, and I think should, should, you want to be know what that is.
His statement in there too, though, with those policy girl.
I think his statement was so evident, because it was accomplishing what already established. So I would say modify it to just point to.
Okay, can you, can you just say on the statement, yeah?
Yes.
Because I think.
All right, uh, any additional items to consider?
Yeah, yeah, anything else, Alex? Um, I don't know. So, so we had your, okay, so the one, I was thinking about in the work. For me.
Or did it work?
Yeah, yes.
I'm sorry.
Um, under the leading conduct, um. Uh, I say something like, board members will actively listen to our presentations and discussions, and just kind of. Um, kind of aside, it's that, you know, particularly with all our cabinet C's say is that, you know, people won't be. Kind of working on the conversation. You know, they will act, when somebody is, is taking the time and the effort to kind of present to us, that will give them our full attention.
Would you put it forward?
It's not, you know, I'm here to, meeting, not at all, but I just stick it at the end, you know, just like, to all presentations and discussions.
Thinking of something, so, also, like, what is it?
In use of meetings.
Is there, yeah, I, I. Where, where would that be?
It's a policy.
Oh, policy, okay.
It's in the one thousand, I think. I can refer that also to.
Well, yeah, I mean, it's not that, I mean. Some of those can be useful advice to the same, if, if, say, can be useful sometimes, but, but when somebody presents to us, we don't need.
Give a right go on that.
It's gosh, and, 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 also, the second position. That's what I think.
Well, I, I hope it doesn't get in my capes like long, so I need to.
Yeah, no. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Captain.
Yeah.
My, I'm gonna get to the end.
Yeah, those can be useful devices, if you're sure.
Yes, usually what I'm saying.
Yeah.
What about the, uh, code?
Is everything? Okay, I think, okay, excellent, look at that. This core, now, fun stuff, no, I think they'll give us time to defer, because I think that's gonna be the medium, actually, to be honest, I think. It's gonna be the medium, so.
It's going to be the medium, so, moving forward, so this is my, um, sort of, so, just to share. Um, and I want to share, uh, kind of give the history of my past to the newers, board members, and anybody who are listening. Um. Uh, what I joined, uh, this summer, while I went to the spot, and then I turned this down and. When I joined, um. Last, uh. Here, here, go ahead, go to the next slide, I'm just going to get the next. Um. The, when I came on board, uh, we had a draft strategic plan that was in the works. And there was several, um, groups, uh, contractors that actually were part of supporting the plan. There was community engagement, there was, um, various engagement with the community. And there were some, but there was still some longing for the element, and there was a comment from the board that. They wanted to see more aligning snorkels and, and things like, so we, so we went to the board, we got some feedback on the board. The way it was planned, and I went to our team. And just be, uh, fully be honest, our team had various, uh, degrees of engagement with the plan. So it was really important that, uh, they spent some time really thinking through. And then four people worked together from July to August. Who really spin line the plan, right, so we want to make sure that. Uh, everyone was involved, because I believe if everyone involved, incorporating, then. So we took the plan and we decided to really dig in and have an honest conversation around what the work should look like, what we were ready for. Um, so one example was M T S S, right, it, there's a goal for M T S S. But we knew that that was something we could not do, and so we're going to refer that for this year, because we're actually going to be launching. Over to the other, all of our schools, right, as an example, but last year, we took it off because we knew. We were not ready for that, we're really launching this year, so it's going to be a lot of control, we'll talk about that. Yeah, 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 well, I hear this is not the point, basically, the support is system around. Supporting different levels of, uh, instruction, so it's, it's sort of like that pendulum, the bottom handle being. Like, it gave you almost all the, it should be getting more instruction, and then give the intervention, and then more intense interventions. So that's sort of the framework that we're using, and we, and I'm not to say that we did not have schools doing parts of it. But we didn't have a district-wide system and expectation developed, which is right, which is what we're, we knew, we had to. Learn about it, see what all schools were doing, and then now we're ready to launch, right, for this, where that this is what we're doing.
So, and the part, the, the, I'm understanding, uh, probably also is that it's. Uh, not just academic support, it's to kind of hold.
Yeah, it's hold tight, yeah.
So, you know, first, as soon as they need somebody here or support, or whatever it is, you get everybody together, and then. Support them all across all of us.
And the goal wasn't the fault of the summer, so we spent, so that's why they all got to know me, because I spent two to three hours with every one, every week. And we're counting out each goal and going through the, coming back to the board, getting, uh, getting some information. My goal was to, August tenth, because we were bringing in all the principals together. Is to put this in front of the principles and make sure it makes sense, and then we had a line up to do, because they had to then rewrite theirs, go implement plan. And align it with the goals, so that was the next piece of work, and then we brought it to the board for, for full understanding of the final document. So I just wanted to share what happened last year, so this is a new document last year for everybody. And it was, and so last year was really about building the foundation, right, of the work, aligning assessments, aligning all of the pieces. Realigning even our board members, so that we could have had these goals together, and make us actually talk about student outcomes, I don't know, a board meeting, I think that's. Kind of crazy, right, let's do it, anyway, so we decided to reshape the whole, the last year was foundation building. So the goal for this year is, we got some feedback along the way, and we learned some things this year too, and we're still. Data, so my, I'm one of those people by July, I think I was making everyone crazy, because I start getting intense, like, where's the data? Anyway, so we, the data's starting in, it's not all complete, we're getting some of it turned in. Uh, and we're going to spend time as a team analyzing that data. And looking at the data, and actually looking at the goals, and saying, did we meet our mark, why, why not? If we didn't, do we keep the goal the same, or do we change the strategy, B? Or if we did make our goal, do we tweak the goal and advance that, right, so all the things that we're going to do. We're not ready to do that presentation with you all yet, because we're still expecting, we're getting three pieces of data still from the state. But we have some data, like, I'm ready, so basically, we're starting to look at all of that, so. So what I wanted to connect the board, because the board over the last year, especially during the work sessions, have a lot of comments around some of the goals, and I'm going to refer back. I'm fully expecting you to talk about this one, M L L, right, the M L L, so I'm fully expecting you. To talk about it, because this is our opportunity, and we will align all that work, so. This is just high level. High level for us to look at it, look at the plan. And you see things. Change, like one mid-course correction we did last year, just to share. Who is now school improvement plans are going to have this in the goal, and I'm pending the goal, like that's a mid-year course correction we made. Based on data that we look at, right, so then the question is, we do have it at high level. Goal in the strategic plan is giving an example of what we can do, do we need to break them that, and let the key to that ever make that? But the school improvement plan, all the schools are going to have a discipline and attend for, for this year, just to share that, I would do. But those are mid-course corrections, that we did, like this is a continuing improvement plan, the course we can sweep, but now we're going to be in a new process, so. Yeah.
So it's, it's great, more than the same, uh, it's great, students feeling like it's a long school, like, okay.
This is why, I'm going to go through that in a minute, so we best start again, so that was the goal for this year, last year, was building, building the system. Starting with Lakeview Foundation, taking the beauty to the plan. Aligning it to school improvement in schools, and then working through equity teams and goals, and make sure it's all in alignment, and that was true. That was, that was huge work for us, like, we have to make force corrections even in our equity leads, because one of the things we learned last year. And you guys heard this, when the equity leads presented, is equity leads are meeting here, principals are meeting here. They were making these equity goals and conversations, both had different conversations around what they were talking about, and so we said, no, we pulled them all together. And so now the plan is, is that formally, the principals will be attending the meetings. And we also realized, we need to bring this board, that's the equity, so that was another shift, we may not just talking about the work, what does the work actually look like? We're talking about even, so the equity leads need to be part of leadership, and all of these things, we're moving all of these systemic adjustments. And it is challenging, and it is hard, because also, you also have ways of doing it in the leading form. Right, so we're still working on that, but last year, we built the, the expectations, the culture, and the framing.
Yeah, I guess there. And trying to make it, but the other one, after here, maybe, you, you, it was, it was about.
Yes.
But all, all of those things.
Yeah, okay, excellent. And so, based on the last three years, uh, the districts work with Putin, Sam, East Dean, Dr. Rochelle, uh, Rogers, Dark. And Kristin House, we've come up with these three goals, that actually, it's a great, that there are students that fight with the way it's taken on, right? But in thinking about our reunion with the board, standing behind the board. What we research, do now from conferences, for board members, are about vision, goals, values, metrics, monitoring, accountable, communication federation. We need to try and continue to improve that. Next slide. And so we're just not going to relay this, as you've seen this a thousand times, but this is where we land on the four goal areas, which we will keep, the four goal areas, next slide. And this is our big shift, so I'll say, when we came on board. We sent a huge document to all of the staff. Related around smarty goals, so smarty goals are different from smart goals, and this is where we need to make the shift. So when you were talking about equity inclusion, you know, all of its pieces, so you start with the goal first. And making sure it is pass center, so moving from smart goals to smarty goals. And smarty goals means we add inclusion and equity, and within the writing, going framing up all the goals, and then what does that mean for progress monitoring all of these? So starting from the beginning, then rather than that, so that's our big shift. We did send a document around, what does it look like for smarty goals, for school leaders, what is, I think I sent the document. I will just say, there's a lot of conversation, a lot of discussion, and there was a lot of not readiness in October, but we kept bringing it back, bringing it back, bringing it back. I think we're ready, and I'm proud to share that actually, uh, for, for, for all the documents that you've given us over the years around, um. All of the work that's been done over the last five to seven years, all the frameworks, everything, we have now, uh, every lead, mirror, uh, every guidance document. For everybody in the system moving forward from now this way. Okay, the next step, next slide, so, back to our strategic plan, you have in front of you. So I gave you mention that there may be hard copies, and I'm going to give you mine, if you want to ask her come for Alex here, or if you want to. Or I can give you mine, left, and right, over, backwards, and backwards. Well, here's the next one right here. Yeah, right here, yeah. And. Yeah, there's a, there's a. Yeah, so. So what I'd like you to do, and so we have the goals, you can see they're not really at a low level, and I'm not going to go through them again, too, just go through the next slide. But why don't we go back to questions, before we go for the goals, I just wanted to say, or even if I'm a planner, if we can reframe the smart goal, right? There's that and what else, um. So one of the questions, because this is a high level for community. Clarity, because that's the big thing, is it clear, right, is it clear, right, does it clearly show that it's being prioritized, what we know are going to be the plan? Does it clearly show which students are in there? Uh, alignment, do the goals reflect the vision and value to the district, and do the goal connect to feed money and school improvement plans? And then accountability, does it clearly show that it's being monitored, does it clearly show how they're being monitored, right? So those are the big pieces that I really wanted to really be honing in on, just at high level, or do you have feedback? On the goals, are we going to be sprinkling, or very ready, or really staring? So, uh, just really quickly, quickly, the next slide, so like, this is super, here, well, these are the goals that we outlined. And when we met, we broke it down with percentages of students meeting, so these are the goals, right, desired outcome on how, is how we listed it. And then we listed out a smart goal, right, percentage of students needing standard or assessments, and English language turns, and I'm just using my S P A's, the assessment tool. And then the smart goal as written, where you need to think, is this really a smarty goal, right? But all students, I don't say right away, no, but all students. Uh, will increase by ten percent in each part area, right, so that's where we stand in the later foundation, but now it's time to get. Smarty, smart to smarty around those goals, uh, anyway, so just about an example of the goals that we laid out, because like I said, it was a foundation year. But we did get more precise and more, uh, strategic around certain subgroups of students, and then other goals, like irony goals and this and that. So that's an example, I'm not going to go over every slide, so next slide, yeah. The same with A D H learners, who did these, these are the goal areas, and the metrics that we're using, and we're outlined, they're all sitting on this little document here. And then the next slide. Relationships. This thing is for community, for the, for the, I think the next slide. So, um, so on that, on that, what I'd like you to do is you all have in here. Uh, the, 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 the P D F, and that's actually the document that we have, that's our final document, that's actually on the website. Uh, so that, everything broken out, or you can go, if you print it, the PowerPoint is there as well. But, and then all of those little, uh, filter embedded links that are on the website, you can see and get into actually some of the, the points, but. Uh, we don't have the data in front of us, so this is more based on some of your comments, some thinking, the conversations we've had, those high level, we'll come back with the data. In a month, in about, about six weeks, uh, exciting some of these comments, but I just wanted to hear your high level. And this is your task to tell us, if, if things aren't clear, if things aren't aligned, or if you don't, because of that accountability. And to give your input, so as a study session, I'm going to have you just look first at just the top goal areas, and. Uh, I have expectations for all, I don't want to go over this too much. Just look it over very clearly, look at it, make sure it's clear, aligned, and there's, there's accountable measures in there. And then there's suggestions for additional thought, or how, what we need to improve, I want to hear your thoughts, so only help be quiet for about five minutes. Unless. We can really look at our. That's the top part, and I expect, it's just the high expectations goal, but it's actually, if you look at the back page. It's written out for you, more, more of this, and it's all, as it is on the PowerPoint, uh huh. So definitely go back to high expectations for all. Five minutes, yeah, I know, but, yeah, but okay, yeah. Five minutes, yeah, I know, but yeah, but okay, yeah. Okay. That was easy, then, okay, great. So, feedback, um, feedback, so we'll get, again, run clarity, you have a copy of the questions in front of you. Clarity, alignment, and accountability, and so I don't wanna go through the questions, but I just wanna. Hear your thoughts, and we'll go through the goal areas that you believe that we should be highlighting, focusing on, or we should be. Um, alright, uh, go ahead, who wants to start?
You want to speak? Overall, it does a lot of things, answering these questions are determined. But I'm gonna get to the stars on here, I said we're doing rather responsible, specifically engaged students. And is it clear how that's being monitored, specifically engaged, you popped out of the one kind of one. I hate it's battles. Where is it mentioned here, and the only way to comment I have is everything here to. And that's not a criticism, just.
No, the question, that's good, and could you come with the other document too, so you can say, yeah, that's excellent, thank you. Thanks, um, Alex, do you have any comments or thoughts?
Uh, no.
Okay. My after. Go ahead.
So, um, I guess the person, um, and this is kind of a high level again. And going back to the, the students' anti-racist, um, statement. And, uh, we need to, that needs to be incorporated into. And writing out just sustaining this document sitting on the side, we could, or it is a document sitting on the side. In my, it needs to be pulled into either, uh, potentially our policy, raise equity policy, which the raise equity committee is regarding, that's what it is. Or it also could be put into the vision of the strategic plan as well. So I think it's, yeah, we need to suck it into our, our core documents, um.
I believe it should be both.
Yeah, okay. Um, now, as far as.
There's, there's, you can sort of drop that, or something else, something. Well, neither, we both get it.
Um, okay, that's, that's what I'm gonna make to the outside. So, when I look over the experience, the, the thing that strikes me is this aggregation. And this, none of this data, none of these goals are disaggregated, I mean, they may be applied, and so. You know, when you say all students, the problem with all, in that version, all students. That's a, you're gonna just kind of look at the average of all, and that high is always a variant. So we need to focus, um, I know a lot of the data has come to us. And goes, but I think that, that needs to get necessarily, specifically. Some of our, our goals need to be disaggregated goals, and we call the, and by black students and the team of students, and. The other big one for me, particularly talking about assessments is, um, the students that are who are more able to be mined. And which is typically roughly about half of our students, so I, I like to see some goals, you know, and. You know, I worked with, um, Ted, our teaching manager, and the second coordinator. We're gonna, we've got one report, we're getting, getting more reports. That's gonna be focused on those students that are who are more able to be mined and how they're growing. Because that's, that to me, the ultimate goal is to get those students growing, if you get those students growing. Then they will get recognition, they will get out of grade double, and that's where we want, you know, we want to get to, so that's, that's kind of, um, I guess.
Good question for you, I abandoned that because we said all students. Which was, that could more inclusive.
Yeah.
So, curiosity I have is, is that covered? Because what Dave wants out is, yeah, we do have certain roots and a bottom ring. Further, you, you know, there's several, and is this?
Yeah. I think.
For me, that, that gives it this concept of targeted universalism.
Yeah, yeah.
So you focus on, you know, the students that are the part that's doing it, and when those get raised up, by definition, they're.
Well, certainly follows.
I believe in that, and so we did that for years in terms of targeted universalism, but I think also. Uh, because someone, more than fifty percent of the kids were, we, we had a hall strategy in the beginning, but we do need to get more targeted. I agree with that, and that's where I'm gonna do the data analysis, to really emphasize where the targets need, there's a lot of targets, by the way. Everything, in some of our, some of the categories, there's a lot of targets, you could take. MLL, for example, you could take, you know, HYPod, you could take HYPod with them, you know, you could just. Do it any way you want to, or two years being nine, and so I think that's where we're at at that point, is, is we still have a whole goal, big, our big. You know, I call it that big occupation goal, however, you're right, we do think we have a more. Targeted strategic, uh, focus, because it, there, there is a lot of data that shows when you do that, it does well that in your group, so I think you have, you can do both in some ways.
I mean, it is, it's a way of, by targeting the groups that are the part that's related, and that's how you get to.
Yeah.
I think you're going to say, yeah, this was time.
Yeah, yeah, but they're all, all the minutes, right?
But there are some, there, there, we usually.
Stay, yes, this is awesome, or yeah, I don't know.
And the, and we also have our score improvement plans, really critical, because we want to make sure that the score improvement plan is how targeted, especially in the. So we have a pretty high level, but there was nothing to stop us from going with monitoring.
So you can say the good name is Reed.
Yeah, yeah.
Please, yeah, or.
Assistants. Or three, yeah, you can do that, it needs help from the university.
I did have, of course, well, my comment in the whole thing is. I understand that a lot of students are qualified, will meet your criteria, et cetera, which all, that's, those hundred percent goals, most of them are unachievable. Uh, just because of practicality, but like, I mean, if you're really close to a hundred percent, maybe you can get a business, not a thousand. So, so we needed that, the ones that I'm looking for, and that kind of work for things, we have very good methods of, uh, students making progress using the LDA. Uh, which is a test for, um, you know, all students.
Yeah.
Um, are they making good progress, and, you know, uh, we wanna, and if you start breaking, okay, here's where we are today. And we're, we're maybe fifty percent, so we want to go up to sixty percent next year, so, you know, give that continuous improvement idea. And another one is, you know, this is, that goes to the five, so we have this five, this issue of five years in kind of status. That's kind of something to stay used for all time, and it's, it, it means you're kind of stuck, and we have way too many students that are sometimes, or have been there. Many six years, seventy years, or ten years, and so, uh, the other goal is to. Consistently cut that number of students that are in that status down over year, over year, over year. That's, those are still isn't my true suggestion for kind of making, so, as you say, smarty goals.
Oh, no, 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 yeah, he went ahead, he went ahead, okay, that's okay, he went ahead, so that's, so, yeah, he went ahead, he went ahead of these, so. Having, we don't have that common high expectation for all, that's okay, I just make sure, let's go to the next, well, let's, so how about this? Why don't you spend time looking at all of the, you have all the goals in front of you, take a look, some of the comments will probably apply to all of them, so. And I'm just thinking, you know, she's living, people on the set, she and Jessica and all the team are going to be wanting to help me update, we'll put this in front of the principals again, and then bring this in front of the board. And, uh, I want to show the students, I've seen horses with some placements as well. Uh, so, and then also, one of the things we talked about too, that there's a lot, right, so. Wondering if we have too many, if we need to streamline it down to, like, is the little bit already versus. What's, you know, a little bit already versus FBA, you know, that, those are the questions more emphasizing, those are the questions we're asking ourselves as well. We're not gonna change everything drastically, because I believe, you know, this neural pad though, every year, you know, you do that, but you, you update and you refresh. So I'm just gonna give you guys five more minutes, or maybe a little bit longer if you need to, to review all of the other goal areas. I, uh, I, I have excellent call, like the media's one, so I'll give you five fifteen more minutes to look at the other areas, and just make some notes, if you notice commonalities. We'll make sure we, the goal is to make sure that we align the board, so.
What's the question, one situation?
Yeah.
But it's, it's the exact acronym, it's meant for, it's. It's a national organization, it's kind of kind of, um. It's not.
It's not specific, it's stable.
Makes any particular.
That's one, so your phone was just so much easier to transfer.
Yeah, you know, yeah.
Never lost where it's.
Yeah, yeah.
It's, it's like pages long. Students with, I knew you were something in education plans, independent education plans.
Individual, education plan.
Okay, there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, somebody is, is tall enough.
Yeah, I was trying to get people, can you use that?
She's helping with their moments, okay, are we in a possible meeting, or just?
Yeah.
Well, so my computer just decided to restart and build it.
Oh, that's always fun.
Sure. So I can send a email to the board, asking for another person, you know. Probably not, and I get a bit of some badness here. That would. Whoa. Whoa.
Yeah, that definitely should. One of those are, maybe the third, take a turn about it.
Awesome. The attempt to say that, stop, one of the things, always.
Always helping families. You've got two more goals, that break the party, yeah, I'm definitely. Alright, sorry, I'm happy. Do me a call. Yeah, so, one Spanish speaking and one Latin, but they just had lots of questions, I mean, yeah, they're very vocal before, and just that's. Like you said. Yeah, okay, so that is something we're working on, or who is all the principal to get all the orientation days on there, we're having a name on that, so. Yeah, I know it's very well, we're having all the principals last week to get them, get all their days on there. So what approximately? I'm sorry.
The one side of the day with orientation and asylum.
Yeah, five minutes next week.
So, that's awesome.
Yeah, yeah, that also, uh, also, we know we said, we love it, alright, so let's get back to the feedback, so thank you, I'm very excited. For that, you know, my family's outside, that made some help, so we just talked for a moment, so thank you for your patience. Alright, so, uh, let's get back to feedback, so again, what's the question for feedback, and sort of beat them for the clarity. Does it clearly show what is being prioritized, does it clearly show which students are in center? Do the goals reflect the vision value to the district, do the goals connect to student learning and school improvement plan? Does it clearly show what is being monitored, and does it clearly show how they're being monitored, alright, feedback, and related to any of the goal areas, and then. We have some indicators, and we're gonna make sure that we incorporate that into our. Go ahead.
So, I guess, okay, and so I gave you that, and then, and then, um, I guess the other. One that I kind of. One I'm reading about, this may be, so if we start collecting. Some street data. Um, how is that, I mean, for some reason, look at that, okay, so here are some kind of goals. For, you know, belonging, and identity who. To some degree, straighten how we attack that one. Is where the street data comes in, and you, you know, do that, so it may not be that. Um. Street data, collect, trying to get collected, like you say, you know, really, we have a process affecting it for the purposes of the budget and so forth. Um, it, it may not fit here.
But I think maybe it's longer than that.
Yeah, absolutely, and, and the question for you, so for example. You know, students were, particularly, the student advisory were concerned about. You know, bullying, and some students being, um, harassed and so forth, and how do we? Um, and that gets to this point of belonging, and, and well, identity as well, so we're talking about location, and how they feel about, um. Discovery who they are, really are, how they get supported, and it, is there any way that we could, I have. Can you think of other ways that we could measure? That. If not. I don't know. Better than, I mean, there's this student survey that we're talking about. Uh, and a healthy survey, I don't know if there's other ways to the student advisory, I mean, your kind of survey, you were reading. I mean, there may be some students who drew the survey and click and attack some of these, I think, as well.
So, um, being surveyed, that I had on my version.
Yeah. Yeah, well, yeah, yeah, that, and whose, her students. Feeling more, you know, better, more safe and secure, and belonging, or are they, they're not good, or?
Yeah, I think we could, I think we could raise, and, um, I will sort of remember, we were talking about. Um, accessibility.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So like, what, maybe I need to find to that, see.
So like what I'm making, I just find to that see. That's an avoidant.
Yeah.
But.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's, yeah. Other than, other than, you know, sometimes it is asking students how they, you know. With their perception of how so. Sorry. Go ahead, it's a survey, you know, where you. Yeah. Want to. Yeah, that's what I can announce the end is, yeah.
Well. Or even when we were before it's not holding up. That that number is eighty six year old. By August, it says zero. Yeah. It makes me wonder two things. One, it's not hollow like, right? So um, we talk about this and we don't have the capacity or the time to do this, but. We talk about creating our own survey, right? Whereas a district to kind of capture what our interests are, like the students are saying, and we're trying to figure out what that may look like. And um, you know, when we work with survey companies, though, you know, in muscle.
Yeah.
So we're trying to figure out what do we have, who do we want every person that's taking more in the past. So we're trying to figure out what we have the capacity to do to start a big, huge project like that right now. Uh, because it wouldn't be ready to deliver it while we even spring and did something. Um, and that's that catching the items for our own values and like measuring that like, you know, following the spring, like can I do that? That goes to the sticks into the data and kind of really figure out what's going into the base and what the students say. That's one way you can do it.
The other thing that we're talking about, supposedly we have this, but we've never seen it when I have students say our priorities, yes, but. Either have a system for an honestly recording.
Yeah. Yeah.
And then even then you can, you know, the number of times.
So wait, fair, had an advertised app and make sure how a who works that have where that's that information going.
Right. That's the take that we've got in the past. Okay, we clarify it and nobody's gonna, we don't chat. We'll, we'll have. What if you're in town and you're bored?
Well, I have, right, another area that we have is our referral system, like why are we supposed to referral system?
Right.
And that's something that we could add, because we just haven't had this bullying, but maybe some feedback is saying we all learned, you know. Out the way of cyberbullying and bullying through we doing our things. And that's the way we can capture additional data as well. Is so student perception data, student perception data, and then there's um, actual hurdle data, right? And that would be interesting to look at.
We're.
For the perception data and what's actually happening. Because maybe, you know, social media just takes things sort of like, so this they heard that it goes, it tends to like spiral. But then what actually didn't happen, how many referrals do we actually have? Is it all coming from one kid, right? That we should, you know, like those kind of things. This one kid targeting like a hundred people from cyberbullying versus, right, multiple kids and constantly happening all the time and all of those things. So that is something we could delve into and for feedback for us around that, but we would just have to make a quick full on harness. That would be a simple thing we could do is to do say that bullying piece and add cyberbullying comment. And then it comes a survey, you know, like I said, we have to really decide. We decided for this year. To keep our agreement with EES that does the survey, but we did not make it in there for next year. I think the goal is to come up with some type of our own, like typical survey that aligns it, but we have to figure out the capacity and what we can do to achieve that. So I'm just being really honest with this group because but that also costs, but that's money then that we could reallocate. To a project like that, but as to what we find, like who can manage that and make it pass so. Yeah, so those are all things that we could easily tweak to get some more information that gives that what the students are talking about. So back to this strategic plan, other good, good thoughts, anything else? So maybe we are. Yeah, this is the time to do it. We are want to do. Uh, a long way I started to think about safety, well, there. Uh, the help. And um, you know, the fed. Mm hmm. Environment, which might be really stupid, like it doesn't screw with any of these things. But and so I don't want to add a lot more goals and bits to you, but I want to say. You know. Perhaps make it easier on ourselves, I mean, the city is, well, I would say considered. Um, irresponsible, insecure. Uh, and a welcome and the children that live in Quilla. Is between their home and here, our way of school and on the way back from the campus. To their home, right? And obviously, you know, with their families. It's a second tier faculty members and everything else. So I wonder if we ought to say something in there with our relationship to ensure that, you know. We're safe out in front, safe on campus, on attitude and that we have programs to make sure people are fed. And then uh, ensure that people are clothed. You know, I that totally meant a lot and everyone. Don't tell it especially in the face, that's me. No, it's gets mental therapy, but right, it didn't need it, but we don't take care of the basic needs, right? Oh, there we go. Well, right, yeah. And so maybe there's a sweet mistake, maybe towards front. And that's always been that safety that there is not the basic goals of education that we can remember. But we don't want to try to look at the city and other agencies to make sure. So maybe that's, no, we kind of talk about that in terms of our commitments, right? In terms of it, not necessarily making it a goal, but that our commitments, that for example, every hour, until ten, well, it isn't bad. Breakfast and lunch every day, no matter what. Right, because those are the things that assure community, like these, we guarantee your daily fed. If they have clothing needs, we will wrap them up, like those are the things we will wrap them in your kit in their way, right? So those kind of things, just sometimes that. Safer, but that's there, that's found maybe. Yeah, not necessarily. That's not the success we have. But if they don't have it. So maybe that can be in our values statement. Like what our values are in terms of what we believe, but we have a, we have a, we have a vision and, you know, mission or what are the values? Right, um, around what we believe about kids and money. Because I don't have, no, we're hungry and that's what the big concern that came up last year, like the panel we had, right? The winter, worrying about the weather, right? Totally, worrying somebody's school license there. Yeah. From the school, yeah. And it's freezing outside, all that was a sweater, you know, it's. Yeah. Pretty big stuff, I'm like, either that. And they might learn a goal, like candy butter. Yeah. So what I think we can about those values. And maybe not about what our values are or like what we believe that every kid should have for money, right? For something. Could that, because there's so many that I think I get it. The other thought I have is I was like, it's still engaged. Um, I don't fully understand. And there are things that are here that I have to do with my annual performance review. That are painful to adults and humans who are living and are paid to do it. Um. Possibly the parents' participation will happen. Uh, students setting their own mold and things, that's actually not. On my imagination, because we did it in the seventies, right? And I guess we're still living now, but. I know at work, some people get promoted themselves because they know how to. Do a lot of those people. And other people don't get promoted, nor herself, because they don't navigate. Setting up rules, sit talking with your teacher about them. Putting in the baby step to achieve the victim, which you hold themselves. Um, so I just. I know you guys are professionals in this field, I shouldn't get worried in this part, but I am a motor, you know, because it's hard for a whole bunch of adults who are paid to do it. Yeah. Well, we, so I mean, the stretch goals, that's not the stretch goals, that are the stretch goals. Yeah, so that's why we actually targeted third and seventh grade is just, for all, so all the students do it from third grade on up. So nobody came wanting to do that, but it's a third grade to, and then teachers teach the student. They actually teach into that and teach them how to make a goal, right? So you make a goal or threshold for themselves and then that's part of the process. And then at the end of the year, we actually celebrate, we give them physical, we get the, make the threshold and so. And we, we started third grade, it's just a way to start, this is something that I'm going to start myself on, this is my goal is stretch myself. And I'm going to work towards it and having a kid that I won't shit about it. It's not, it's not anything around um, achievement. Uh, it's not anything, it's mainly about this is how I want to grow, this is what I want to push myself to do. So the teachers have been doing this for, I believe. Two years, correct, did I correct two years? So it's been part of the system for a while and it's something that other ones really felt. It was really interesting because when I even did video meetings, I had several teachers that came to me and we talked about their stretch goals and how they put into that. And it was really interesting to see, so I know the teachers take a lot of pride in that. Um, and that that they're going to kid, I think with having a kid, they're saying, this is why I wanted to do it. Okay, well, that why, if they were engaged in that way and love it. Yeah. Maybe they can teach people who are. Yeah, at least, yeah. So that's another question. So I want to make sure I get to the Alex and I'll go with Dr. Box. Oh, that's. We give her that. We don't finish it. They'll, they'll get back to the. Yeah. Any other thoughts from you on some of those goal plans, a big idea of thoughts that you want to add?
Now, I just. As I went down the road. I'm just always concerned that we're able to do.
Yeah.
Almost were active, but restricted.
Mm hmm.
Measures.
Mm hmm.
Um, it's threatened either in getting accuracy or expected that. Our ability to measure. Gives us an honest assessment of where we are, what we can call what. Uh, and eventually, yeah. So some. Sometimes these are. Hard to do.
Yeah.
And so those are my concerns, yeah, I don't know that I have better response. And the state should always have our antenna, they're really for raise. To, first of all, identify um. The best metrics is that we are getting for, and then what is the best of, and then tools to respond for that. They can all.
Yeah, that's what the data pieces mean, the critical, like the data piece, so that's where that testing is, okay, did we actually? Um, were we actually good at predicting and laying out the goals, were we completely off the mark? And I mean, to the root goal is probably doing anything that is not a work goal. Or something else that we need to push. It'll be a good, it'll be a good analysis time first, but um, yeah.
On student surveys. I know from average student and work students, well, that's certainly too serious, so.
Yeah. Yeah.
Something to do, something to do. You know, which one, yeah, I always answer, absolutely, whatever. And. Well, you know, we can get them out with other things, not to replace, but later, so measure them. Uh, because. Yeah, I think we can go back to the data. I agree, lots of users. But on this last one. Students who staff participate in that, I raised the summer. And we all know that we have staff, not only obviously, but everywhere that has to deal with the stuff. That don't want to do, don't want to do it. And so my question comes, how are we navigating that?
Mm hmm.
Even if it's parallels to the student who just takes a possible survey. Though our, we have staff that will.
Yeah.
But you're, they are those that said.
Yeah.
Wisdom said, man, I don't want to send people there, they have to be mad at you, it's a negative language. But you're not hearing that, so how do we navigate, how do we? Or do we address that? Or do we address it because we can't go to the objective or the goal? If the staff isn't bought into it or whatever. If they're saying, I will do that, so what was our?
That will only be tweaked pretty heavily, I think, because we now have some guidance document, we have some like substance behind what we're doing, right? And I think we have some online work and we're excited to share with everybody. That will have to change, so I'll give you a history about, yeah, I think, well, I'll share you where that history, that goal came from. So like in my morning, I have all of my records, I knew the staff and everybody, one of the things I heard was. The training around race and equity was opt in.
Was what?
Opt in, meaning it wasn't.
Option.
It's very option. It's, it wasn't mandatory. And I felt very strongly for us to launch the year, especially if we're trying to win equity goals as we're doing the work. That we had, at least for this last year, I say last year, mandate. Um, mandate the work in some way, so we actually decided the all staff kickoff. Was that Monday when everybody comes together and we just bring it and we made it mandatory. And this has never been done before, there were the custodians, food service, everybody. And they paid, they showed up and we paid them, we paid everybody to be there. So that one day where the entire district, and I'm going to say that we took attendance. And we, oh, they didn't have, they didn't get paid, so I'm going to say we didn't get a hundred percent, because I know I have the data. I have the data, HR has the data, HR has the data of who didn't show. But I think the most important part was we wanted to make that intent from opting in, like this is our work, right? And so that was our first, so we made it a goal because I wanted to hold myself accountable to that this is what I'm going to do. And this is what we're going to say, now we have different work that's happening. We have equity leaders, part of leadership development, like all of these things, we've actually retrained the system a little bit, so the goal. Is not going to be the goal, we have to have a different habit goal because the work is going to be, that was, that was to solve a problem of practice from the past. We'll continue to have an all staff kickoff and everyone's coming and everyone's being paid and that'll be now our new habit of being. And uh, but we still have still work to do, and that's the work we're doing with the principals and the equity leads. And the leadership team is for their staff professional development. There are certain things that are out, certain things, and so we're asking the questions, when are the equity and equity's trainings happening? When are this part, and so that's what the conversations we're having is feedback, we're getting is there needs to be more time dedicated to do the things that are going to be content and the profession that will sell for. Work, uh, so that's all work we're doing, so we're, we've got to have a different goal, that's going to be a huge, very important, different goal.
So my concern. For you see, then what else is more? I'm concerned, I don't know if this is fire in the bush. But if the equity teams has not been done. Or no, we're going to be exhibition, say with. So I can't have a tree. There are staff, teachers, etc. Don't want to do that work. And I mean, the scent, like, I'll, I'll, even if it's paid because my whole principle is that my, I'm talking to that person. I'll miss the day he's paying. Say all that business, I get it, but this is who we are, I don't want to deal with that, because that is in our dealings. And it's, if you find that this position is that, that better to where you're trying to move the whole district. And a certain thought. We either coach them up or I treat them, I, I just, I just want to know.
Yeah.
And I don't mean after, I don't mean that. Both the conversation that has the uh, the uh, all stuff that has been introduced and re-coachified and. And people have it, so it, it begins to get a little, it's pretty cold. Staff came to build a vision, so. I don't want to walk, the night and take.
Yeah.
That there's, you've heard, pushback to a net, there's um, grass, we tried to add it, so I just want to know. Me that. Well, what is that, what, how we open that, I don't have that, this is over us on the record, that I let it.
Yeah.
That's not what we should have.
Yeah, I think that my, I'll just say quickly, my own experience, although we have the same experiences as yourself, is, you know, um, you have to. Um, create the conditions in a school culture, in a district culture, in any culture really. That that is who we are and that's the work, and that means it has to be part of everything we do.
Right.
And so that's why it has to be part of school improvement planning processes, this strategic planning process, the professional development. Even my updates, if you look at my updates for the staff. There's a message at least once or twice a month where we're not stopping, talking, like it's not going, it's not going away, right? So you have to make, like, then we want to escape, what, what that one percent, maybe the bigger or whatever, but. They want to not participate, but they're not going to escape the conversation, it only gets happening everywhere. It's happening on the leadership team, it's happening in their marketing numbers, it's happening everywhere. That's what we have to get at, is the mass. And I do believe here, there is a proof of four people that are still getting into the work. And it's kind of like they're creating that, I guess, that revolution culture, right? But that is the work that we're going to be doing. And that's where we have to sort of keep pushing, because then.
There's pushback.
There are pushback, but people choose one of three things. They either leave a district on their own. Or it comes up and shows itself, that it reveals itself in other ways, right? And then that's where you have to deal with it.
That's.
Yeah, and it does reveal itself eventually, especially when. And we're, and one thing, we have to create all the, all the conditions with the students, with the, at every premise of the district. Have to be an element, which is why this, the last year's work was about the system. We have to create. We have to create the system, uh, expectations around school leaders, around staff, around bargaining, around.
Should we show to self amongst the staff, right? What, what, what's our?
That's where we move towards. Well, then we have to work through our, our procedures and policies to, to, to actually. Have those, have conversations.
Courageous.
So courageous conversations, right? And I think, um, and that's where you build the, you have to build, you have to build the system. My experience, having done this in the past. Is when we only focus in one area, which is a lot of district students, they don't say, well, we're just gonna focus on the teachers. Or we're just gonna focus on the cabinet, or we're just gonna focus on the board, but they don't have a plan for everything else. Guess what? That's where all these big happen. You need to not, you need to have the whole system in alignment in the same way, in the same direction. That's the same with the strategic planning, it's the same with school improvement planning, it's the same, and that's the work that's gonna make us online, the system. Because then, there is no, you, people decide that this isn't the place for them. And that's affecting, or it'll reveal itself.
No.
And that's the goal.
Oh, that one.
And are we during it? No.
Well, I kind of think, but. I don't know, screens, anyway.
Right, absolutely.
Uh. Yeah.
And we know that there's some hard stuff in the past, absolutely. We know that, you know that, you heard it, I heard it, you heard it. We heard it. We're, that's where we go, fifth graders. Fifth graders, current fifth graders, shared stories. That didn't happen like last year.
Sure.
And so I'm just saying, the kids are watching us, the kids are watching us. So I think. That's the most important part, right? Because the students are watching us. And so what do we get? We have to be, this is, we have to be a lot to show.
Yeah.
So that's work we have to do. And I think it's been critical that we've been having conversations with our bargaining team and all those, we have, the whole system has to be aligned. So if there's one area that is not, guess what? That's where.
Again, it'll, it'll.
It'll be right there. Um, that's my experience.
So those ones.
So you, you check on, you work with the bargaining when you saw this, they're in alignment?
They're working on it. There's, I would say, they're definitely want, they're definitely partnering with us to think about this. Where Rachel Equity shows up and then, and then, but then we heard our, our partners. Their focus is on the adults, right? The adults and working conditions for the adults. And so within that framing, yes, I think that they are definitely, definitely added into the work.
So far, no pushback, no.
I like, I'll take that. I'm not gonna say that. I'm just saying with any, with any, you have a partnership or any group, there's always. Um, there's always some conversation and sometimes it is also. Uh, maybe not alignment on some of the conversations, but. Even with the student group, right? And it was funny because I had a plan of agendas for them to work on. They, that I thought, I heard that they wanted to work on, and then they completely changed the plan, but that's what they wanna do, right? So I just feel like. That's our job to be flexible and adapt and listen and. But like I said to everybody, not everyone's there yet, it's, we're still building the system. So we still have to, we're not, I'm not here to say every layer of our system is ready to like. We're not there yet, but. We are actually more, making more progress. When I came here in July, I feel like I've seen movement happening in lots of different areas of the system.
If I'm a teacher. I've been around professionals.
Yeah.
Right? Never had a training at all.
Yes, and that's happening.
And they're really, neither are likely.
Yeah.
And they step into whatever the pool water is, and they're trying. But they, they just aren't gonna get there as fast as others. And, um, they're still getting a moment where they get not included, ejected.
Yeah.
Or they're welcome to be in full applause and all of their wants and. And we accept you and they kneel the lupus and kneel with to get, help them catch up.
Yeah.
Do we have plans to event for the ones who are building it?
Well, that's why the professional development has to happen at all staff, at the school level. And then also, I'll be honest, there has to be self responsibility for people to figure out work. And that means, um, uh, reading books, going to seminars, you know, going to events, going to our own events in the community and learn about all the various cultures that we have.
What I'm saying is, if I was a B student and wanna be an A. I do my homework, I'm a B student, and my teacher gives me extra credit so I can catch up.
Yeah.
I can rock.
Yeah.
If I love that being abandoned, I don't.
Right, and that's the.
Either be in this category as an adult teacher.
Yeah.
Or we say, here are bunches of books you can read, here are some.
No, we're not just saying, that's not saying the professional development and the conversations at the school and actually equity with the grace. Right? I was thinking grace is happening part of it.
It's important.
It's super important, but also everything working for our, is important.
Yes.
But I will say that they're also, they have to, they have to be willing, they have to have those conversations, that means feel safe to have this conversation and, and the challenge of grace. And equity, um, that is the most important part is in creating safety so that people can engage in the work. If we don't have those conditions for safety in any work, which then people aren't gonna shut down, they're not gonna do the work, and they're not gonna. Engage in that way. So that's the part that we still.
A little extra credit part, let them say.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm working on it, I'm not the best, I'm still considered somebody who's part.
I have a good friend who worked with me for years and I, I never, I ended up being her boss and she ended up getting so scared. But what she was afraid of was that, that I was gonna see through her. There are all these things that she came to me and said, and we weren't friends at the time, we didn't tell you weren't, but now I have friends. So I was gonna say good friend, we were not. And so she was intimidated by me and because I was in the form of her directly, so a lot of times I'd go off on the special edge, she's like, oh my god. You know, this is mean. And I said to her very clearly, I said, look, I, I know that everyone's in different places. All I need is for you to, to just work with me and so we can go where we wanna go, right? And let's talk about that. And so. What I'm saying is, her name, that was herself.
Right.
It wasn't me, it was what she perceived. That I thought about her equity work, right? What she perceived, what I thought about this and that based on all, that was super omnipresent when I worked for three years in the system. So I think that is.
She had a pushback when you leave the equity stuff, now you're her boss.
And she's like, oh my god, that's just, yeah. Uh, man, that, that's exactly it. And we all had that.
That'll give you. I know, I call it the willing, the able, kicking, it's free.
Yeah.
We're not gonna get a ton of support through the, it was obvious in terms of. Game in line, at some point, somebody just may not be their thing. Is that goal that it performs for you? So that.
It depends on what, it depends on what happens, right? You know, it depends on what happens with the, the agreements, right? So I just think, the goal is, is that we want, so you start with, you always start with the willing, right? And then you give along to people that are curious.
Able.
And able, right? And then eventually, the group that's resistant. The, the resistance could be one here, because I, I'm a. You're gonna think, all right, whatever the fear is, or it could be resistance because I don't wanna do it. So philosophy or fear, those usually the two reasons. And so the people who are fearful, I think you can work with them, you get them on board. The people who are resistant. Then that's the work that's a little harder, right? So do, and that's the inability.
Okay. And then this applies to a bullet that raises a different question. This is the bullet, it's like the most diverse place on the planet. So my question become. How are you here? If you don't believe. There was some. That this heteronic humanity. Has. Certain evil. Why is it, it's capacity, your bias. Or your philosophy. It, it can't align with this. I'm, I'm just like, most wrong against some issue, but we will.
Yeah, well, I would say that's.
I, I struggle as a.
Yeah.
Uh, a student. Able, if you don't, if you've got biases, I guess, the people you're leading.
Yeah.
It's gonna affect the people you're reaching. So what are you doing? I. I totally believe that, it will be that simple conversation complicated and I know I'm the old HR. You're me, but it still boils down to. And, and, and that will surface as you.
Yeah.
The child, I think, the hard part was incorporating this universal idea. That they're all learning it, scholarship can learn it, equity investment. That's, that was hard. When it shows up that I'm not willing because I don't believe that. Part of me says, we're never too keen. We're going out of control, but. Could you run me that? Either. Legally, possibly, well, basically. And, um, and I won't be here. When she goes to therapy and come back and this, we're gonna try it out late.
Mm-hmm.
We're gonna try it out late.
Yeah, which is why the system, that's why.
And I think that's. I'm a firm.
Yeah.
Cause that is the hardest.
That's the hardest part.
But I just. I, I maybe because that. But I'm getting in balance and I know we're in a time where that pushback is popular. And this work is. This work around equity is being. Discredited. With narratives that try to exert power. And I just. You grab the relationship.
Yes.
I mean. Who, who did that loss? And, and, uh, you know, so I would understand that. But not just me, this part. My, that approach, a list of all of this. Like, you know, in the practice of these kids.
Yeah, no practice.
And, and I think I'm told, that's all though. In degree, I would go to the five. Although, although, what you, go, go, go do it.
So this is why the goal has to be reached, is not.
So I don't.
So you're right, the goal has to be reached. So I. Yeah, no, we got ten minutes. So I guess I mentioned, yeah, do I think so? We got ten minutes left, I just wanna make sure. Until the rarities, I thought, well, since we're at the end of this part of the board. In chat, just wait for my class, if you want to just quickly take a look at the board rarities. That did, that highlighted, can you go over and remind us of the yellow means, and red means, and orange, you know? And we'll just take, we'll just take a few minutes to divide it to look at it, and if we have five minutes, it does get. Some items of this week feedback that David never came back and maybe another. Or if there's something you wanna come and sort of talk through this a little bit.
Okay, so the yellow and the orange, the orange has questions. So the orange part has a question in it, or it has a comment in it, such as combined with something else. Um, some of the yellow is for my own. Uh, follow-up, because it'll say needs to be added to the board calendar. There's other things in there, like number two thousand and four, accountability and student achievement goals, this is part of the strategic plan, and said, that's a board question. That's one that the board needs to discuss. So you need to look at those columns, like that twenty ninety, what information does the board want? Inter校校习 activities, what does the board want? This is probably some of these policies, we need to have. This one, twenty one fifty one, be ready in our nine ten school. Or a game. So we don't know what the inter校校习 activities are to say.
Is it possible just to start a talk? And then row by row, fastest we could possibly get, and as quick as we can, thumbs down, we want it out.
Yep.
Is that okay?
That's it.
We're not really much going down to the twenty ones or ten.
Yeah, it's not, it's just, just review it, I would just review it. And just look at it and make your comments and then you guys can maybe email Dave. Uh, with your thoughts and anything you wanna have questions about, you can do that, Dave, and then.
But I'm just thinking, for, for them, it's gonna just go a little white, well.
Yeah.
Pick out a little name, you prove.
Sure.
And love it here from staff. Like, you don't know why you do this anymore.
Well, isn't the bow hanging through toward the end where you have things crossed out?
We can do the bottom up.
Is that what you guys, the cross out ones are assuming, or you're thinking those just go away?
Those just went away and, um, you can see where it says duplicate, where obsolescence. The low hanging fruit starting at the bottom would be college and high school.
Which is what's down there.
It's the very last one, so. Second is the last one, it's not a policy. But I'll actually explain, the policies that were listed here are the policies that have reports that are due.
Yeah.
So.
And I think you can blame someone, it's because there's, they're being announced.
So this one would help the college and high school. What exactly is that? And should it be included in the foster and high school senior report coming up in September? Or does it need to be a separate report?
So my, off the top of my head, yes, included in the, as it was in, you're good.
Great.
Beautiful.
Is there anything else that needs to be added to what I have there in the news? Which should include how many courses, how many students there are, what the trends are.
Yeah. Perfect.
Okay, perfect, done.
Next one?
Do you want the LRC classroom information to be included in the special education update?
That's where it's likely to be long, yes.
Okay. We'll see that soon.
That's where it'll be longer.
Yeah. Okay, great. Next.
Look at that.
Just a little away, just a little away.
These are, these are the lighting group, so that's. I don't think one's with the X.
Okay, well, there's one right here that says achievement index, not sure what this report is.
Where are these words?
And it's like this page six. It says chronic accidents, I'm right with that, it's highlighted, achievement index.
So on, I'll look at the bottom, is that the sixth page?
Yeah, sixth page. Well, you can take a, not wait, the, the, the Tia's on the top and then the achievement index highlighted in yellow.
Not sure what this report is.
Yes.
Obviously. That's a lot, so.
Oh, okay, clear.
So what is the question? Should we have a report on chronic accidents?
Yeah, the achievement. There was a report in the past called achievement index.
I don't know what it was.
So they will listen, okay.
But it's listed as a report and I'm not sure what this report is, I don't ask.
That vaguely. Yeah, I think that's, um, that. That's been superseded by the special equipment framework, so.
So we guys probably.
So you can't get rid of that.
That's a lot, beautiful. And then, um. Let's see, anything else? If, if. Do you want to be energy management education?
Yes, that.
What do you have a little bit?
Oh, yeah, possible. It's not, six eight one eight is policy, or six eight one zero, sorry.
Gotcha, the next yellow.
Yeah, annual evaluation report. Has the board ever received this report before?
I don't believe so.
Okay. Is it what, a report that the board needs to receive?
Well, if it would, it would be part of the facilities. Facilities report, or this, when the facilities helps come in and say.
Yeah.
Here's what we've been doing on. I mean, I think it was, it was just last year, we got some extra money back from Seattle City Drive because of some improvements in the. And the lighting systems in the building, so.
So we're not sure if this is coming out in a report, though. Could we draw that report and get into the facilities?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's the one, um. Best part is, yes, the five days.
Yes, we can just make sure, add that in, but the only thing is, is this is a policy, just to make sure that that came to policy and the board has to approve that. So we have to make sure of that, that the board, if we made that change, that it's included in that reporting, that it has to be noted in the board policy.
This, we're, we've been in pretty smart.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Okay.
This is your point.
Other things, I guess, I'm sure we know.
That makes sense.
As things are going down the bar.
So when we get rid of this, they need to draw.
I'm sure, you cause.
We're gonna hold on.
Not getting policy that comes to the board.
I'm glad you said that.
Okay, we'll see that.
And so that's gonna be. Energy, smog and all that. If, uh, what the transportation was revisiting conversation about like the buses. That's something here that we're gonna go, we can be live, so that all. Even if it branches, it'll be those.
Yeah.
I think.
Yeah.
Okay, what else?
So let's go up to the one right above that where it says. I think this should be combined with properly in data management report and when was, you know, the capital assets right there?
So.
Six eight oh one. Six eight oh one, when was this done last? Cause I can't find it. Cause I can't find it in my records.
Which one is it?
Six eight zero one.
The capital assets, it's, it's not highlighted, yeah. That's the, that's.
Right. I mean, I have it down as a second meeting in March, but that's probably why it's a bad, that's why they're supporting here. And should it be combined with property and data management? Report.
Which, um, facilities.
Okay.
Yeah.
And.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
Okay, so there's a second policy change that we need to do.
And then the other policy change, definitely that, and then school owned vehicles.
Well, wait, there's a.
I was going to the L R C, sorry, number twelve?
Six eight hundred should be included in asset management report. I don't know.
Well, condition of facilities. That's, that's evident. I mean.
Is it?
The asset, yeah, the asset management report is, so there's somebody that comes in and, you know, evaluates the condition of all our facilities. Give it the report every year.
I guess, I don't know, but we have to do a resolution to the O S B I, agree to this report.
Which I think we do. Yeah, I mean, we get that report, the. From the facilities, I mean, don't seem like facility.
It could be in March. Which is what our facilities person gave in the presentation. So six eight hundred looks to be something that we need because of some O S B I.
Yeah, it's just, when you do that, and get that report comes in and be, I mean, it goes a pass, could have been, probably, notice that we have good lift.
Okay, I'll open the last resolution.
Yeah.
Then school owned vehicles, should this policy be retired?
I think so.
Yes, cause we don't have any. Well. Well, we have school owned vehicles, but not for use by staff members.
I don't have three versions, board, we need five.
Yeah, there's one.
Transportation, has the board received this report before? Is this a state or federal requirement? Ever students who live in the minimums does that stuff right there? Whilst provided reasons why each of these students is transported, including, you know, funding and subsidy.
It feels like something that has been that all day.
Yeah. Well, it's saying included in transportation update, yes.
Mm-hmm.
Um, have, have we got a report like that, have you, we call? So this is, you know, I think this is one mile limit. And unless there's, you know, other extenuating circumstances that it's not safe, it's true to walk in that one one.
Yeah, but it's, it's, there appears to be sufficient justification for the district providing.
Yeah.
Exteration, but I don't think that, that's not really the point, how? What's sufficient justification?
I think it's, yeah, I, I, I'm sure there's some, some activity to it. I mean, is what, is, is it, that's definitely, you know, is, is there a sidewalk, is there not a sidewalk, things like that?
Okay.
And it was, yeah.
I think we should move it to, and then also, not that policy, we should have noted this.
See, I have a policy, those ones are outdated.
This is outdated, all that, the point of this conversation, cause we're gonna move on to these, we were boring, and we, we wanna make sure that we're. And, we have a couple minutes, I just make sure, let us, the biggest, uh, low hanging fruit, that you can see, go one more item, so then we can have you work with Dave on the rest. Um.
Okay, external performance audit, this one must save a lot of money.
Okay, so that's, so that's one that I introduced, uh, when we, we can have a conference, but. The question is. When we have, there's some problems that are going on in, in the district, and we have some, we obviously recently had significant issues. And we got it off into the rooftop, I guess, it has issues in facilities, it has, you know, um, probably, probably be a board. You know, um. Rewriting that, whatever way makes sense so that we can, and we may be, the matter is sitting down with the board superintendent, saying. There's some departments that we seem to have some issue.
I wonder, we should think about, you know, us discussing now on the day that.
Yeah.
The long term life, there is for the law, some of that's expensive, that now is right here.
Yeah.
Can say, yeah, I really live for that, I've grown a lot on that, in the last one seventy-five years.
But six plus years ago was the last report.
So it's like, it might be, it's obviously, you missed.
So that's not saying, should we audit it, it's saying, does the board, you board five years off?
I could say, it doesn't have to, some mandate, except for, I don't know, I hope.
But even here, on several cases, our current state laws say, there are numbers and pockets of dollars. It's at, where it came from, and when she gets a report, there's numbers that show out of nowhere, but that, that, that act where it taught it. Every five years, she would have been in that position.
But is this a monetary audit, or is it performance, how, how long's the screen?
So.
Corporation, H R, banking, it's private organization.
So we're gonna talk about violence. Well, I mean, you were talking about, I don't know, things are managed.
So we don't get something that they were to say, why aren't we doing the next一轮?
Well, they did, finds out, they do the part.
Right, you might have to come back to this.
Yeah, yeah.
That's how I am as well as we are.
Well, I know, she said, I'm not a new part. Yeah.
It is one part.
Well, that's a part.
It's probably received.
Our name, great, well, then I think we've had, we actually accomplished a lot of things today, actually, you guys report.
Okay, you have a comment.
Yeah, have a comment, okay, great.
And we've got it down here.
So just to wrap this up, so, um, Debbie and I, if anybody else wants to come in, we'll, we'll go through the rest of them, and then come back with their recommendations for what to do.
I know, I'm interested, I'm not sure if I wanna come in and say anything.
Yeah.
I think you should, I made it, that can be a personal.
Yeah, yeah.
I just wanna turn my desk to it, and then get back.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay, so that's how, and then we got back for a review of.
Anything that I've really done.
Yeah.
That's a data.
Okay, so, um. Yeah, now we're back to the.
Oh. Oh. Um, yeah.
Yeah, let's see, we have wheels. Other comments? In the room, or online, if it's on, you can, um. Hit the radio, send, and, um, zoom, or can you reach the chat? I don't know, do you have any, is there any?
There's two, we'll be fine.
There are two. Okay. So, time is. Taking away, I don't see anybody looking for, to come in for double comment, okay? So those are the comments, and we need to mention to adjourn this meeting or come back at five thirty for the budget, um. Uh, in public, um, meeting, so. You're the chair and the board is.
Oh, we're just, we're just. This one's not, right?
We're, we're just.
Just go to the chair.
The chair, yeah.
All set, everyone?
Okay, we move to the second day, chair and education for the. For session of this, I have five, any posts, so the board's just, is a chair.